Not on the agenda, because I failed to tell the clerk to do so, is a discussion by FIF and the K-1 Center. So I asked these representatives of FIF to come up, Vicky, Amy, Ashley, whomever is going to come up.
Sit down?
Can we get you another?
I can sit over here.
Okay.
It's fine. It's fine. We've already played musical chairs a few times this evening.
All right. With your permission, I'll begin. I'm Vicky Bailey. I'm a former principal at Fairhope K-1 Center and the founder of Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation. My dear love, both things, K-1 Center as well. And as I've said in our notes for you here, the purpose of our presentation is mainly to educate you and to update you regarding a potential partnership with FIF and the city in a purchase of the Fairhope K-1 Center property at 100 South Church Street. My part of this discussion is, or update, is to tell you a little bit about the history of the building so far, since you're a new council, and I've shared some of that with you. In past committees that I've served on, even prior to me moving as Director of Instruction to Uofa, before I moved back, I served on some committees for possibly to revitalize for purchase of the building. And mainly, the same subject rings true, and that's the performing arts, the arts. Those are the main ideas or ideals involved there. Science, technology, all of that. Leasing rooms to musicians, artists, to help part of the payment, or the payments or the financing, to defer the financing of the building. In one, there actually did state, it was stated, there would be a request to lease the building for $1 per year. And with that said, I went to, after going over this history, I attended a presentation with, that FIF made at the library regarding the STEAM project that would be part of that camp, the new enrichment campus. She has a rendering of that, again. With our conversation, people were saying, "Well, how do we go about moving forward? What are steps to move forward?" Amy and I discussed having a meeting, and because of my continued contacts with the Board of Education and the superintendent, I arranged a meeting for FIF. Ashley and Amy and I met with a representative of the board, Cecil Chrissenberry, and Eddie Tyler, John Wilson, John Gray. Who else was there?
So was it?
That's it? Okay. And in that discussion, we let them know we weren't, we were earnest in wanting to purchase the building. And we would love for the plan to be that the city and we purchased together. I say "we," I feel like I'm FIF, but I'm trying to pull, really pull everybody together to help this partnership come to be, because I would love to save the school and the historic value as well. They have such a wonderful project, and the beauty and value of the field trip downtown is what we hit home with the Board of Education. Don't scare me. I thought you were coming to fuss.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
No. Anyway, we've met with them. We've discussed the purchase of the building. They informed us that, right now, that it can't be purchased as such, and there are several, there are really three steps that must be taken before, but they really did want to, us to look at purchasing the building for the appraised value. Appraised value, market value. I researched that further. I called the tax assessor, talked with him. I have a copy of the appraised value. And I'm on to the next update of the appraisal. The appraisal, as you see the date I've listed, is July 28, 2016, because we were considering getting a new appraisal, to see if that was an accurate appraisal. We were encouraged not to do that. Because of the date and what the proposed value would be now, would probably be a lot greater. So we did not do that. And with that said, I talked to them about a lease. They said they have researched that too, and it is against the law to lease for the dollar, the request. That was another request that had been in a former, in a former proposal, not this one. So we left the meeting with the thought of a plan, creating a plan, and steps. I called John Wilson, have communicated with him through the superintendent, to get exactly when it will be available for purchase, and what we do at that time. "We" being FIF at this point, and possibly partnering with the city, the two entities. And in an email, he explained to me the following. He said that the board has to do their due diligence, and this is with the attorney who was copied on this, before they could even, we can take any official action for the property. And he summarized the steps as follows. The first step is that we, that's the Board of Education, have to receive the survey results. They are expecting them any day, now any minute. I talked to Cecil prior to coming to this meeting, and he said it's not in hand yet, but they think it will be before Christmas. Anyway, it states the title and ownership by the state and current ownership by the county. And then the second step is this, that the board has to take before we can do anything. The second step is that the county board has to pass a resolution recommending the sale of the property. So that's the second step they have to take. And then the third step is that resolution has to be included in a certificate to the state superintendent of education to request that the sale of that school property take place. So, see, it's not ready to be on an auction block yet. And they told us that in the meeting, they were, they said, "It's not." And the fourth step is, the request has to be approved by the state superintendent and the governor before they can do anything. You may know that already, you may have known that. But this is new to John Wilson. He has, the attorneys, he said this is a process that he has not, you know, this is the first time that they're going through this, and that they have been told that this is the way it has to go. The second part, we said, is, well, you know, we were ready, possibly with a contract, so that it wouldn't be auctioned. There is, there is not that intent, with the intent, if you have a, I'm wording this wrong, if you have a potential buyer at fair market value or appraised value, which could be negotiated, and the reason it could be negotiated, there's a piece of land that is not usable, and you all probably know where that is, the gully, and the tax assessor's office has given you the exact amount of acreage that is, which possibly could be deducted from the price, I don't know. That would be for you all to decide, or us to decide later on down the line. But it could be negotiated. And if they have someone willing and ready to purchase the property, it would not be auctioned, would not have to be, and there's nowhere that says that it has to be. So that is pretty much our due diligence on the request to purchase the property. We've had a lot of good discussions with the board, and I think FIF, I think there were some potential hard feelings from superintendent and board, thinking that, you know, tugging and pulling out some things, and after everything, the air was cleared in the room, they understood that we were earnest. We weren't ready to run out and start another school system if we didn't get away. That is not what we're about here. We're about creating an enrichment for the children and preserving a building. And that's pretty much the reason we're here, to see if that potential partnership might be available to us. And then Ashley is going to answer any questions about the possible STEAM project, if some of you haven't been made aware of that.
I'd like for you to ask the Board of Education these questions.
Okay.
Have there been any schools in this state of Alabama that have been given to municipalities for less than market value, or even leased to municipalities?
Okay.
I think that's a fair question. As they're saying that they have to do this and have to do that. You know, it seems to me that we're leasing, do you know offhand, maybe, what we're leasing that park for across the street?
It's like a dollar, another 30 years.
A dollar for a year. So is that market value? Because I'll give $10 a year if I get to have that property.
I think one of the things, before y'all get into other parts of this agenda, is, and when we talked, I explained this to you, there needs to be, you know, right now, the city takes on a lot of responsibility from, you know, buildings that are, you know, as far as sustainability. And I agree that a partnership would be good, just because you're bringing a lot of stakeholders to the table to make it sustainable. But, you know, the library did a fundraiser, the building was paid for, but the city still subsidizes it over a million dollars a year. And, you know, with each building that we kind of partner with, there's a lot of expenses that go into this. And so I do think a sustainability study, but, you know, talking about, and I've mentioned it to y'all too, to the councilmen, that, you know, consolidating some of our city's services is important, because it would consolidate our administrative, and we are kind of discombobulated as far as our city's services, being some with Public Works, some at Nick Center. Of course, you're not going to change the sewer plant, but, you know, we're in a grocery store, and, you know, there's just things the city needs too. We need a, we need a court, a good court. You know, everything can be built to suit, and I think there's a lot of opportunity that because the K-1 Center is happening right now, could happen sooner rather than We do need to understand that the sale of this property, though, the money is going to be spent on the new schools that are going to be built in our feeder pattern, or remodeled.
And we did make that clear too, when we talked to them, that we would expect, and they said it would, to put it, we would put it in a contract, that all the, any funding, any purchase price would go and be for only the five.
Stay within Fairhope schools and stay in that feeder pattern.
Yeah, they're going to do that, because the purpose of selling this property is to create two K-sixes.
Right.
Into our intermediate and elementary, and we want that, because it's good for our schools. So when I say stakeholders that could come to the table with this property, you have to understand that the property also includes the park, like you said. We should take care of that now, when we're talking to Bobbin County Board of Education. The alternative school, you know, that's a gateway to a community that's not inside the city. The Nick Center property is on the land that Bobbin County Board of Education owns, and now they're expanding, you know, the elementary school to a K-six. These are all things to talk about in one conversation, because we'll be in the same position in 30 years with the park across the street. What if they want it back, and they feel like that's valuable property? I don't think we stop at the K-1 Center. It is every property right now, including the Nick Center. Again, because we should look at all of our facilities. We shouldn't be in the building business. You know, I think we could consolidate a lot of our services into one. But you have the court, possibly Fairhope Single Tax, they're in downtown, which to me is suited for retail. They might want to be a part of this. Of course, FIF, the USA is here in this building, so in five years, when their lease is up, what are they going to do? You know, they might want to contribute to a build-out, or at least pay more rent than a dollar a year.
That was.
You know, these are things that I think, you have that what-if meeting. It starts with this, but then just talk about and brainstorm with everybody that might want to be a part of this. And I think that would be really exciting.
Mm-hmm.
And make it sustainable, like I said. That's, that's the main thing, is we have to, especially with an important property like this, when we're looking at the CBD and our traffic and parking, and the engineer that came to town, they said that residential moving into municipal and then downtown is a perfect transition. And that's what you would be creating there, and making it walkable. And that study is happening right now. So it's, there's just so much opportunity, and I think everybody can have what they want, instead of you paying for it, or FIF paying for it. I do think it could be acquired with some of the assets we already own, without coming out of pocket for the city. We want that money to go to making our schools better. So it's, I don't want to come to the table anymore, and I was, you know, an advocate for this. I want to lease it for a dollar a year. The reality is, I want that money to go into our schools, and it would go into our schools.
Well, and if you had a financing, you know, depending on what the...
I think that you wouldn't even have to finance it.
Well, from what that appraisal is, it's, what it would be, it would be a really good purchase price, I would think.
Right. And I'm not denying that. I'm just saying that we evaluate, council, all of our assets, and see if this is a priority, and this is something that could happen now. I don't think you have to borrow money. You can potentially sell other assets that you're not using. That money goes into our schools. We get the alternative school, the K-1 Center. We negotiate, so it's off of our books completely, or at least the lease, the park and the Nick Center.
So what is it you want us to ask the Board of Education?
Well, that's what I'm saying. To me, it is a bigger conversation. We know what FIF wants. We want that, because it would be a huge asset to our city. Now, it's really the city discussing with the Bobbin County Board of Education what the possibilities are with all the assets. To me, it's a bigger conversation, but knowing that y'all want to do this, and we're going to include this in that.
I don't disagree with you, but, but given the, I guess, the K-1 Center and the sensitivity of that property in the city of Fairhope, and as close as I feel that we are in transferring that property to the city, I would hate to see us step back and try to get, and I don't disagree with you, on the Nick's property and the, and the park, and getting all this done in one deal. To me, the sensitivity of the K-1 Center is paramount, to try to get it, get that done, and then go into the conversation on the other properties.
I have been discussing this with them, and they do want to look at the bigger picture, Bobbin County Board of Education. So the alternative school, to me, doing it in the future, when that property could be unaffordable, you know, right now, is the time to talk about it, because they're not even thinking about that. But they do want money, because they're investing in the pay-as-you-go program. So it's a huge opportunity for Fairhope, the city of Fairhope.
I'm just a little curious, what would you foresee the park becoming?
The park wouldn't become anything, but what you do is you don't wait 30 years, and when that's up, and then say, "Well, this is a valuable piece of property, just like the K-1 Center, and now we think we need this to use the money for something else." I'm saying, let's not go through that anymore with the Nick Center, the alternative school, and the park. Let's take care of it all now.
One other thing I'd just, you know, would like for you to ask, and this is going to not come as a surprise to you, is just ask the Board of Education, if you meet with them, if there's a possibility that they can consider our current contributions to the schools as some sort of payment, and in recognition of the $350,000 cash we give them now, plus the $550,000 in in-kind services. And I know their argument will be, "Well, you're just trying to add your schools."
I already had this conversation with them.
I know that they will, but I still think it's a fair question to ask them if that has any value, or could be leveraged in that, in that purchase.
Again, I'm just going to say this, just because I've had multiple meetings, and I've invited you, but you were busy. This, I was of that argument too, but if we, if they don't sell this and don't use the money for the K-sixes, then we don't get those schools. So we're taking, and what I'm looking at, again, I didn't know this was on the agenda, so I'm not prepared.
So if they don't sell the school, and they don't get $3 million, they're not going to build the schools? Is that what they say?
They're using this money to build the schools. This is part of the pay-as-you-go.
The K-sixes happening regardless.
They've got the facilities, though, to do it.
Well, I'm just saying that that money's going to our schools. If we, if that money doesn't, then that's just the 3.1 million, or whatever it is, that's not going to go to our schools. So if we're looking at other property potential, we could look at the triangle.
That much of money.
Or something else that we're never going to probably do anything with, and purchase everything, and those funds will go to our schools, which is what we really want.
Well, I was just hoping to get some kind of credit for what we've been giving them.
Absolutely. But I think that, you know, Daphne does, Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, Spanish Fort, you know, there's a lot of the more, you know, the cities that have higher property values, they all contribute to the schools, and we don't want to not continue that. In fact, we want to increase.
No, and I'm not saying we threaten them with that, or threaten to withhold them. That's not wise. But I'm just saying that it is a fair question to ask them if we could be credited with that.
Negotiating advice.
But it is just money that wouldn't go to our schools. It's not like we're taking it away.
If there's $600,000 that we're doing in in-kind services, a portion of that we're doing just because we're Fairhope, and we want to maintain a certain level, and there's a portion that we're doing that they would have to do otherwise, so there's probably a little bit of negotiation wiggle room in there.
Well, in the history, when Fairhope built the municipal stadium, that was intentionally, that was initially going to be leased to the Board of Education to use for sporting events. And, you know, over time, we got to where we didn't charge them for the stadium, and then, oh, well, it's, then we threw in free electricity. I mean, then they were supposed to pay the utility bill. So over time, we've just taken on more and more of that, to the point where we have probably multiple employees taking care of facilities that are largely used by Board of Education. I just think that should be considered.
And I think having it as part of a larger conversation is good, but I think we do need to move on this particular piece of, especially if they're in the position that they're willing to, to take these next steps to move forward. I would hate to see that get away from us.
We have them working with us. I mean, we do.
Oh, yeah.
They're ready.
They absolutely want to work with us.
Yep. Well, and what we want to do is make sure that we're all on the same page in presenting a united front, so that we can approach the, you know, Board of Education and say, you know, this is what Fairhope wants to do, not just what FIF wants to do, or the city council, but what we collectively can do together.
But what the city does have to recognize is that if it's not something we're going to participate into with maybe consolidating our services or having a presence, then the feasibility has to be, is there going to be a subsidy required long-term? That's the reality. And the way you, you know, you prevent that is by bringing more things to the table, more stakeholders, because that's how you make it more sustainable.
If the, if the funds stay within our feeder pattern, if we were to purchase this for, you know, the appraised value, the funds stay within our feeder pattern, if we were to finance this debt, could we reallocate the contribution to the EAC to service this debt? And then we've essentially prefunded the EAC, I mean, prefunded that by that amount.
Have you talked to the principals about that?
It's the same thing. You're just moving it on a spreadsheet.
You're paying it all forward, at least the way I'm thinking of this, you're paying it forward at once, and then you're rerouting that money to pay it back.
To pay it back, though, instead of giving money to the schools?
But you've already given the money to the schools by buying the property and keeping it within the feeder pattern.
No, no, I'm talking about the appropriation. Are you talking about what the city gives?
Well, what I'm saying is, so if we buy it, the city's, that money is going to then stay, as we've been told, within the feeder pattern. That's a big lump sum, that's the equivalent of if we were to go ahead and prepay eight or 10 years of EAC contributions.
No, it's not the same. It's not the same money. This money from EAC is used totally differently than what this money that's going to be used from the sale of this property.
It probably would be bricks and mortar, and it is a totally different money.
The way I understood it, the money from the school goes to buildings.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
The money going to EAC goes to programs, curriculums, this type of thing. So it's two different expenditures.
I don't know if that's totally true, because I've been told that, just because we, if the city purchases that property, the city of Fairhope might get pulled out of the pay-as-you-go program. We're still in the rotation, and it's just that faster, because we, that money is put back into the fair schools. So it's not, it's not, we bought this, now, we're no longer getting the funds from the pay-as-you-go with the county. We're still in that rotation, you know, with the K-six.
But that money that is, that they get from the K-1 purchase cannot go into our classrooms, like the money that we appropriate to the schools as a city.
I would maybe disagree with you a little bit, you know, because it will go towards, you know, and the enrichment, the, you know, the math instructors and the reading.
I think we would ask that question. I think that's a question to ask.
You know, because you're just starting the conversation, but I was in agreement with her in the fact that, the way I understood it, it was going towards brick and mortar.
Yeah.
Buildings. Now, whether or not it does in the long run, I couldn't tell you. You know, we're just starting at the very beginning of this, but that's my understanding right now.
Well, put it in perspective, just on that, you know, will it or will it not? Even if, even if it was purchased at 3.1 million, that's less than 1% of their operational costs for an entire year. Their $350 million budget.
Well, that's true, too.
So, I mean, something that could alter the landscape of Fairhope forever is less than 1% of their budget. That's kind of scary.
It is. And they could, I want only want to say what my thought is.
It's worth, it's priceless to us, though. And I think that if we come together with everything we can do as a city, you can't put a value on that.
You're right.
I mean, forget what they're going to do. It's about what we're going to do. And it is priceless.
What we hope to do, absolutely.
It seems like it's in our favor, or in our best interest, to try to consider acquiring the property before we even have the full range plan of what we're going to do.
Doesn't matter what we do.
I think that we know that STEAM is something we're interested in for that particular section y'all are asking for, but the rest of the property, I think, would be in our best interest to acquire it if we can, in advance of having the full range plan, because I don't know that we'll have the time to really vet that prior to when this window may, may close on us.
Right. And they think that they will have all of this. John Wilson thinks, as far as resolutions and all, maybe end of January, February.
You're referring to 1 through 4?
1 through 4.
They have to.
Too ready to, mm-hmm.
Well, we need to move along in the conversation. What was next in this?
It was simply to answer any questions, and I think most of you have seen the presentation. So if you did want to know more about the proposed STEAM Center, and what FIF's portion of it would be, is to give you that kind of background.
Will you give us a two-minute summary of that again, please?
Sure. So, as you're probably aware, there are four outbuildings on the property.
Do you want to see the rendering?
Yeah, I'll see it again. I've seen it, but it's been a while.
And the proposal is to use those for the STEAM enrichment center for classrooms, designed in such a way that they are quite flexible, essentially turn them into what Rebecca, our architect, calls a 3D classroom.
There we go.
So you've got living walls.
You may be there, you may be there a while.
And also to restructure, restructure the grounds, so that the Pelican's Nest is more of a visual focal point, and that it then works well within the four buildings. And this would be both for students' use in Fairhope and throughout the county, but also to attract the community, to engage the community more directly with what's happening in classrooms, what the children are accomplishing. It would be available K-12. FIF has been investigating, working with a STEAM director that would work among all of the five schools to help coordinate programs, and we've been talking with the principals for years about this now. And they and their teachers have been involved in all of the planning.
And Ashley, this came up in our meeting with them regarding the actual facility, going to a facility versus being in the classrooms, rotating to a class, and how much more profound it is when you go to the field trip, the facility on a field trip, you walk to the bay, you come back and you explore what you've collected at the bay, and you actually experience the entire...
And Ashley, this came up in our meeting with them regarding the actual facility, going to a facility versus being in the classrooms, rotating to a class, and how much more profound it is when you go to the field trip, the facility on a field trip. You walk to the bay, you come back and you explore what you've collected at the bay, and you actually experience the entire, the entire process.
It's modeled on the Pelican's Nest, the Pelican's Nest, which is a field trip, and its proximity to the bay. And it's also proximity to downtown. Many of the school groups that come use this as a full day, and they go to the museum, and they go to Jean's Beans. And it really is a community-wide, for them, experience. And so, this is not in any way to exclude the possibility of more comprehensive science labs or steam centers on each campus. That would, this is to be, as FEEP was founded, this is enrichment. And particularly, not only that the, the experience of going to the bay and the, for some children, the only time they ever see the water, not only are there benefits to its being the field trip, and Casey, particularly the director of the Pelican's Nest, can argue for that quite effectively. But again, if we look at our recent history in voting to support the school system, we clearly have a severe disconnect between those of us who understand the value and who regularly experience the strength of our school system and those who don't. And by maintaining everything on a school campus, we will never engage those people. They will never see us.
The retirees.
Yeah, well, so if you don't have a reason to be in a school, you won't be. And by putting it in the heart of Fairhope at this historic and, you know, building with a lot of emotional investment for the community, it automatically engages people. I can see an art walk, including, you know, people from the community, and there's the moon buggy, and there are the artwork that the children have done, and your science experiments. And it will showcase the strength of our school system in a way that is not possible by having everything siloed within an educational building on campus.
I think it's all very positive.
And in that, they were very, the question came up, is this for every student in Baldwin County? And we said it always has been, of course it is.
I just want to point out, though, that steam does have to be in the schools, because there's no way to bus every kid to the facility.
No, no, well, that's part of why we have the steam director who begins before there's even a building.
I wanted you to point that out, too, because that's something that Baldwin County Board of Education, they're not going to contribute to this, even though it's going to benefit our students.
Actually, they said they would, yeah. In our discussion with them, one of the things that they said was that if, you know, we can get things together and get the steam center going, that they would support us with personnel. So, they will supply us with, we asked an educator, we asked that specifically.
Getting all of the students there, I mean, just all of these things, I just think we should look at it as a feasibility study to make sure how we can bring other things so it pays for itself. I mean, if the city was rolling in the dough.
Well, we're only discussing those four buildings, right? And what happens to the larger portion of the property, we can certainly contribute to, but that's not an inherent part of what we're proposing. So, I think there are, there are sustainability models for the larger building that would help pay for the entire property.
The performing arts. And that's how it makes everything work.
But when you think about wanting steam in the classroom, and that one field trip obviously isn't sufficient, what we can do in those classrooms by having a steam coordinator who works among all five schools and allows for team teaching from one school to the next, which is something that we have a dearth of at the moment. We met with John Cardwell just last week, and he was talking about how there's a different math, method of teaching math at three different schools, and so by the time the children get to high school, they've all learned it differently, and you have to do some reteaching.
There should be continuity curriculum from K-12.
And this will help ensure that. And it can also, in a sense, be an incubator program where you can beta-test certain programs, certain methods of teaching, certain subjects. And so, what happens with the, the steam director can then be disseminated into the classrooms with the other teachers, because you've tested it, you've worked with it. And then, over the summer, because this facility will be available year-round, over the summer, then you are able to do your own professional development. So, here, we've done a year of this with our field trips. We know this works, we know what it costs, we know what materials we need. So, then you spend the summer teaching teachers how to teach steam. And so, it's inherently supportive of steam in the classroom, because it's going to be essentially where you, where you test and then disseminate.
I'm a fan. All I think about is long-term sustainability, and I agree. I just think it just needs more information. It doesn't prevent us from moving forward on something, but will it look exactly like this? Those are things we have to look at for sustainability, that's all.
Y'all, counsel, do you have any questions for any of these ladies?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate your interest.
Who do we get back to with the answers? Yep.
Clark, and just give it to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, entertainment district discussion. Counsel, we've had a lot of members of the business community revive this discussion. I'll give you a quick background. Probably a year and a half ago, or maybe more, this was brought up. Ordinance was crafted. Arguments for both sides of the establishment of an entertainment district were given. The elections came in 2016 in the fall, and basically, the council is kind of punted to the, to the new council. And we have not taken this up yet, but recent events have put a sense of urgency upon some members of our community to revive the conversation. So, the reason that I put it on the work session and the council agenda was several reasons. I thought that we needed an opportunity to discuss any, anything, if any changes needed to be made to how it was written. I wasn't certain as to how much interest there was from the council, so that needed to be discussed. And then, if we, if we wanted to move forward with it on the agenda, we could make changes in the work session and then introduce the ordinance, because it hasn't been introduced. We could introduce it in a regular meeting according to the changes. Or, if you do not want to make changes, you don't have to do so. And another option is that you may not want to consider it, so it doesn't even have to be introduced tonight. But, in fairness to everybody, I put it on both places. Now, there's been a lot of talk in town about people walking around the streets and drinking. But first, let me say that we have an open container law. So, if you're citizens walking down the street with a drink in your hand, it's against the City of Fairhope's laws. That has not been enforced, to my knowledge, for a long time. Where the entertainment district comes into play is for those licensees, licensed sellers of alcoholic beverages. So, if you're at the art center and they're serving wine, and you walk out of there and walk down the street, because they're not selling it, they're not licensed seller, the ABC board doesn't get involved. The ABC gets involved in is if you are a licensed seller of alcohol and someone leaves your establishment, or if you violate one of their other laws. So, that's been one of the misconceptions about this. It's up to the Fairhope Police Department to enforce the open container law. It's up to the ABC board to enforce people leaving licensed establishments. So, if you leave any establishment that's not licensed downtown during any event, or if you walk up downtown with a drink you brought from home, that, that's not governed by the ABC board. They're, they're not looking at that. You know, having said that, some people think that it's hypocritical that we allow these businesses to be fined when someone walks out of a business, but then we don't care if somebody walks out of a business that's not licensed to sell it, and they walk out of, you know, any store, if they're not selling it, and walk down the street. So, that's a little bit of a background. I wanted to point out to you, if you look under item six, and just some things that we need to discuss tonight, is, under section one, there is what's referred to as Exhibit A. And if you look at Exhibit A, this was where we were in the fall of 2016 in drawing the lines around the entertainment district. Our CBD has changed some, most recently. If you'll notice, if you can look in your book, it goes, it carves out the K-1 center. You see how it goes around the park there across the street from the K-1 center? It excludes that, and then it, and then as it meanders by Faulkner, our community, Coastal Community College now, it encompasses the amphitheater, but carves out the main campus. And the idea behind that was to exclude classrooms and schoolrooms that are of use. But then, you, the amphitheater was included. Now, they could exclude it, the school could exclude alcoholic beverages, but that would be up to them. So, those are some things, as you look at this Exhibit A, we might want to reduce those lines or extend those lines. I've also been asked to consider the pier area. It's been called the Main Street of Fairhope. People have said, well, why wouldn't you include the pier if that's Main Street Fairhope? I've had people mention to me Henry George Park. I've personally witnessed during certain events down there, people literally have tables with tablecloths and a whole selection of wine on the table. Well, that's illegal in the city, but it hasn't been enforced. What this would do, if it extended to that area, would be make legal what people are doing now. Chief Pantis, I see you back there, and I also heard from one concerned person that the police department was concerned about the enforcement of this ordinance. I actually think it makes enforcement easier, because you don't have to challenge somebody, because if it's legal, you don't, you know, if they're walking down the street with a non-breakable cup and it's got a beverage in it, you don't have to enforce the law. But you can give me a different slant on it if you wish.
Well, that is true, but also, it's true, when you get alcohol, and so much alcohol, it creates a lot of problems like what Mobile has in their downtown district. As most people know, I don't drink, so people think that I have a thing against drinking. I have friends that drink. Long as they drink sociable, we can have dinner and stuff, but if they get to getting out of hand, I leave, because alcohol does cause problems. One of the things you had said was that it hadn't been enforced, and one of the reasons it hadn't been enforced is because, like a lot of the events we have downtown, like First Friday and stuff, and for years, I've asked, I asked the previous mayor if he would put it, when we put it out for Mardi Gras and stuff like that, if we would let him know that this is a family social thing for Mardi Gras and different things like that, so people wouldn't be like, we're in Bourbon Street or in Mobile with alcohol. And so, you know, we do what y'all decide. If y'all decide for the entertainment district, we will enforce the rules and regulations. But one of the things I would caution against, really, is the pier, because we have had people come from different places to see the sunrise in the morning, the sun, the moon come up at night. And I personally have caught people down there strolling vehicles with the little red solo cups, drinking, and a lot of stuff going on over the years when I was patrolling. And so, you know, you get that close to the water and stuff, and we're going, with the entertainment district, I feel like that we're going to get a new breed of crowd to come into town. Yes, we like people to come to Fairhope, and we want them to enjoy it. When I go places, I tell them about Fairhope, but I don't want it to get to the place to where it's where the drunks hang out, because it causes problems for me.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
All right, counsel, let's see, going back to that, so then if you, so I'm just putting, I'm just putting the arguments out there. The, if you notice, Section 3, it says if someone is to leave an establishment that's licensed to sell alcoholic beverages, they would be required to place them in shatterproof cups that could be approved and purchased through Fairhope Downtown Business Association, or that could also be through City of Fairhope. And that was discussed in the past, to probably be in paper cups, something that's going to degrade pretty quickly. If you make them out of like stadium, plastic stadium cups, they can be used for years, and, you know, people can bring them from home, and they're really not leaving the place, and look like they left the place. So, you'd want something that didn't last very long. Section 6, it was written, once again, this was never adopted, that it would be in effect 365 days a year. I think the argument made there was that if you just limit it to weekends, there's not that much business during the week. But I've heard both sides. Some people say only special events, holidays, city events, such as First Friday. So, if you're going to entertain this notion, I'm just trying to put the options that you might want to consider, A, B, C, and D. Of course, you do have the option to not consider any of these, and we can, we can move on without further discussion. So, that being said, I'll open the floor to discussion.
I support it, but limited to special events. I just don't think 365 days a year that we want to, want to open up this Pandora's box. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to turn into New Orleans, but I just think, I think you limit it to First Friday Art Walk, you limit it to some other special events, some parades, and I think that we can determine what those events are, or people can apply for a special event designation, you know, when they bring their event forward, for permitting. But I'd limit it to that.
Okay. Any other comments on any of the other?
I would maybe draw the line to map the CBD boundary, and if the boundary grows and extends, you know, to.
So, even if that includes a school property?
Well, I guess you don't need that, so.
But you can still follow the CBD and carve out, I mean, I don't, if it's special events, people are going to be stumbling down the classroom, I mean, I don't understand what the, the theory behind carving out Faulkner is.
Well, I think it was trying just to keep people from walking through there with alcoholic beverages. Just trying to keep the sanctity of the school.
Reduce the litter and things like that.
You know, I'm sorry, Robert, go ahead. Yeah, to me, I mean, this entertainment district is basically just allowing what is happening to happen legally without the ABC breaking down the restaurants and the bars. You know, the people can leave without the owners being harassed. Like you said, it's been going on, people have been bringing their toolers or whatever else downtown. Chief, as far as public drunkenness or rowing us during Mardi Gras or other, you know, art walk, is it, is there an issue currently with people getting out of hand? I'm not, I'm not saying it never happens, but is it?
We have had a couple of incidents at Mardi Gras, but none lately. Art walk, we're getting a bigger crowd now to art walk, but it's not, we see people, you know, walking around with a bottle of beer, we just tell them to pull it out. But it's not our hand, but we don't want it to get there.
Oh, I agree with you, you know, wholeheartedly. You know, we want to keep, keep the character downtown Fairhope, but I just don't think making this entertainment district is going to change that character. I could be wrong, then we can repeal it, but.
Well, what about, I mean, I did, I'm still stick with my opinion of limited to special events, and I'd maybe even consider wanting to put a cap on the time for that, 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, I mean, I think the later you get into the night, the more problems you're going to have.
I think that's also covered by current ordinances on the books, they can't serve past a certain time.
Right, but I'm saying I'd cut it off earlier than that, because that's 2:00 AM. I'd say 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, somewhere where most of these events would be wrapped up.
Yes, so that you're not allowing them to walk around.
Not encouraged to just stay downtown and walk around.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I truly don't know how I feel about this. I feel pretty confident that I am against the idea of it being 365 days a year. You know, we got a lot of feedback through email today, and people reaching out to me on the phone. I was in the car all day, and it's pretty split, it seems. And you get some variation of opinions, some people that don't want any drinking in Fairhope at all. You got some people that, you know, think it should be 365, you know, for businesses who sell alcohol. You know, I don't really know. You know, you just got to be careful with these things, because even, you know, we're sitting in here in a room with good intentions of the way we envision this thing working out. If everybody does it the way we're intending them to do it, it will work out great. Doesn't always, people don't always do what you are expecting or hoping that they will do. always do what you are expecting or hoping that they will do. And so I just, you know, I, I worry about that just because I'm a worrier by nature, chicken little. But, you know, those are just things that I think we have to keep in mind. But, but I think there's arguments for and against it, I really do. But, but I do think the one thing I feel strongly about at this point is that I'm not comfortable with it being 365.
I think the problems come in when we're busy downtown. I mean, my store serves alcohol. It's monitoring it when you're busy. And I think if, if restaurants are having problem now, problems now, monitoring it and getting fined, that's a reality. It's more expensive, and, and people are doing it. It's just hard to monitor. I think if you do consider doing it, do it for special events and just to start it out. I mean, you're not, doesn't mean you can't change it down the road. And, and, but most special events end at eight. I don't know that you have to go to 11. I mean, you know, this is just my two cents.
Robert, do you have an opinion on days, events?
Yeah, I mean, the special events is fine with that. And I'd like, you know, the Central Business District just to, simple, rather than carving out different lines. And, you know, we received an email from the lady at, I think it was Old Markentown that is right there on the border. How does that work if your street in front of you is in it, but your building is not? Is that?
They'd be included. I mean, if somebody walked out of that door
They're in the
With an open container. I mean, they're violating our city ordinance. They're, they're not licensed seller of alcohol, so they're not violating anything by the
Well, I got contacted by the Art Center, and if the Art Center holds a function that sells beverages.
Do they sell?
Well, I guess they can't. They have to do tickets, yeah, so never mind.
Yeah. Well, I
And then I'm against the cups, the special cups. I think that's a hassle that doesn't need to be.
It would be a lot of trash, but, but it also identifies if somebody really left that, you know, restaurant. The restaurant owners were not against it.
Yeah, I mean, that's
I'm sure they're not.
Unnecessary bureaucracy, in my, my opinion. Special cup.
My problem with this whole thing is it just, but who's an environment that I don't think this city was, quality of life, so to speak, is used to. And I don't, I'm not in favor of any of it, to be quite honest with you. If you wanna drink, drink inside the establishment just like you're supposed to. I'm not real big on walking around the streets with drinks in your hands going from bar to bar. And I can really foresee the problems, as the chief pointed out, that this escalated. I've never seen alcohol turn into a good thing, ever. And I don't see this point of having alcohol out on the streets of Fairhope as being a good thing at all. And I'm totally against it.
Okay. Well, as if, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two for, one against, one kinda on the fence, not really sure where you are, Jay. And I'm, I'm slightly in favor of it. So I guess that's the way of saying I'm in favor of it as presented with your changes. I could go along, I could compromise and go along with that. I might wanna carve out those schools. But I guess if the school says you can't have alcohol here, they can make it illegal. Are you shaking your head yes on that?
Yeah, it's a state.
No alcohol on school grounds, yeah.
Don't have to carve it out.
Yeah. Robert, if you say no special cups, then what, I mean, then you can just take a, take, what do you take out of the restaurant?
Whatever the establishment has, no, whatever the establishment has, whether it's a, you know, a solo cup or
Okay. I mean, not, nobody's walking around and buying with bottles.
He's just saying you're not gonna have a, a Fairhope
This is my, this is my alcohol cup, right.
How about a can of beer? Can's not breaking.
Can's fine.
Down, down glass container.
So in Section 5, so you're saying then you would
Section 6 is one of
Section 3 says cups shall be, should be shatterproof. Cups should be approved. So get rid of that last sentence in Section 3.
Yeah.
You're saying Exhibit A would be the CBD?
Mm-hmm.
That what you're saying? Exhibit A would just be our existing CBD. Now, in that, for that place that you mentioned, are they, does the CBD still exclude them, the new CBD?
The Art Center?
No, the old Bay, Markentown.
I would think they're in the CBD. I would think it goes, you know, down
And the new CBD doesn't get voted on until January.
I think it goes down
Well, what you could just say, and then the resolution should say, which is concurrent with the CBD. Did CBD change the state concurrent with it?
Right. You know, this current map excludes El Camino Taco Shack, too. You know, I would think that's part in the Central Business District, so that would encapsulate that little alley as well. And we can look at that one.
I don't think it does. Look at this one. This one may be a little bit easier.
That's the Central Business District.
Aren't they right in here? That's the old one with some carve outs.
Yeah, so they're in it. No, that's not it. Yeah, that's it.
You're gonna have some enforcement issues with number four as well.
Well, that's what, I was just getting ready to talk about that.
Go ahead, bring it up.
If John Smith walks from North Church Street with a glass of wine from his house and stands next to his buddy who's drinking a glass of wine that bought it at a store, one of them is violating the law and the other one's not, and it's the same.
To me, to me, you haven't changed anything about as far as enforcement, or try to worry about helping the enforcement of this, because all you're gonna do, first, first of all, you can't take, if I go to one establishment, purchase a drink, walk out, go to another establishment, I'm not allowed to take that drink into that establishment. Is that correct? So rather than turn the bouncer, for lack of a better word, to look inside to see who's coming out, now you have to turn around to see who's outside coming in. So you haven't changed anything in that direction, and you haven't changed anything as far as enforcement because I can just, you know, trunks of cars, bags of cars, whatever, all the alcohol in the world, just load them up and walk around town with it. Who doesn't know where you bought that thing?
That's why, that's why the cups establishing where you got it.
Well, again, even if you have a cup, that's an enforcement. You have to enforce that they've got the perfect, the right cup or the wrong cup or what have you. You haven't changed a thing, as far as I can see.
What that would tell
To help out anybody.
If you're a bartender in Bar A, and you give, and you give out yellow cups, and somebody walks in with a pink cup that came from Bar B, they, they see that, and they say, you can't come in here with that. That was, that was the premise behind the cups.
Well, again, that's the same thing. When you get busy, it's a little difficult to follow while they're in. I mean, they may be in there a little bit or what have you. But again, I haven't seen any help in enforcement changing, except turning it around and enforce something all different, in my opinion. It's the same thing. But now you're allowing alcohol on streets of Fairhope. I'm just not real in favor of that, no matter how you wanna do it. If you wanna enforce it during special events, or do it during special, you know, these special events, that's one thing. But to do it all the time, to me, it's just ludicrous. It's absolutely ludicrous.
Nobody's in favor of that.
You're asking for a lot of trouble.
Nobody's in favor of doing it all the time. And you're saying we're allowing alcohol on streets of Fairhope. There's already alcohol on streets of Fairhope.
Not all the time. Just during the special events, which you're all talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
How would you define the special events? Give me the definition of that.
I mean, I think you'd say art walk.
Are you gonna name every holiday event?
I think you wouldn't, you'd name them all, so it's
It gets a lot requested, which becomes a special event.
If you, if you just
The city sponsored, they don't have to request it if it's a, if it's a city sponsored event, such as lighting of the trees, Christmas parade, or any of that.
I think you'd have to name each one specifically, or else people are gonna say, well, this was a
Special to me.
Special event to this, to this group, yeah.
Thursdays in October are always special to me, so.
That's why maybe they're just not gonna have it at all.
I think you have, if you're gonna say special events, I think you have to specify.
I'm gonna say city sponsored.
City sponsored.
Okay, so then if you're at a Mardi Gras parade, which is not a city sponsored
No, I think, I think you have to say what each event is that we're gonna
Right.
I mean, maybe you can say city sponsored, but I think you have to go further than that.
And I think you cut it off at nine or 10 or whatever, just to, just so it's not all night.
You got 12 First Fridays.
Yep.
Oh, you're talking about time.
Time, time, yeah, 10:00 p.m., 9:00 p.m., whatever, just 'cause you're not wanting to encourage this.
Again, I keep
Pub crawl, you know.
Enforcement again.
Well, then you might as well not even have it. I think if you, if the bar closes at 2:00 and you stop it at 10:00.
Well, I'm thinking about it not from a, so everyone can just, I guess, I see what you're saying. I'm thinking of it more from during the time that the event is going on, and people are more apt to say, I'm inside this establishment, I bought a drink, I wanna walk out and catch the Mardi Gras parade as it comes by. I'm not really wanting to see it. Hey, I'm here, it's 1:30 in the morning, and I wanna walk around town over here and leave with a drink.
Like Mayor says, it's just turned up busy.
I mean, I think it's because you're, you're downtown, like First Friday Art Walk, you might just buy a drink, but now you wanna go down to another
Correct.
Merchant.
Without that drink. You can't walk into a merchant with a drink.
It, it's, it's making it so it's like
You can't, can't go in there, you can't.
It's all one event.
Yeah.
I, I can see that, but after 9:00 or 10:00, then
It doesn't need to continue.
Why would you be leaving with alcohol?
Well, that's, that's my point. There's nothing good coming from just
We need to have a special meeting.
Open bar hopping all night.
Special events one.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
What'd you say?
A special call meeting.
A special meeting for special events.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get it to a, a point where it can be introduced tonight. If not, that's exactly what's, where we're headed.
No, you're good. Keep going with number three. Scratch those special cups. The Number four. Yeah, like Marcus was saying, I'd scratch number four. I mean, that's just enforcing more. To me, I don't know what that does.
Well, the other deal is if you have special cups, it doesn't mean you can't keep the cup taken home with you. Throw it in your car, leave it in the car, and pour your drink in that special cup.
It's just more bureaucracy.
Yeah.
So what you're saying on four is you're saying people can bring it from home, then?
People can walk up the street, yeah.
Let's see how the merchants handle it. When nobody comes to buy their drink, do they bring all their own stuff?
That's right. That's what, that's what I was thinking.
That'll be lovely. That's not gonna happen. And there's, people still come in bars, right?
Well, I would say it would encourage, it would encourage less drinking if we left number four in. If you, you know, if you're concerned about what it's gonna become, you know, then again, if you're saying if it wasn't purchased inside of it, but what happens if it was given to you inside of it, right? Well, it does say non-purchased.
Right.
If you bring one in, it was purchased somewhere, wouldn't it?
I thought you couldn't bring one in from another establishment.
No, no, into the district, not into
So how do we have four in six? Four and six not contrary to each other? I mean, I think six needs to be adjusted, but.
I'd leave four in, just to discourage it.
Leave four, change six to special four.
Change six. Is Greer's in there?
I'm sorry?
Is the supermarket in there?
Yeah, they're in there.
So you can go load up at Greer's and just carry it anywhere you want to.
Except into the establishment.
Except for what?
Into the establishment.
Right.
Yeah.
But you, if you purchase it at Greer's, if you go to the ABC store and purchase a bottle of vodka versus Greer's and buy the same bottle of vodka, the one you buy at Greer's is legal to walk around with an open container, but the one at the ABC store is not.
Or your house, that's correct.
Right.
Are these drinks or are they bottles from?
Amen, brother.
Again, you can be
You can have it as a plastic bottle.
Or a drink.
Eight ounces. Right, I mean, you know, an ounce.
Greer's is not a service establishment to pour alcohol like that. You can't go in there and order a cocktail.
I'm looking, I'm reading, I'm reading that.
But you can buy a solo cup and a handle in Greer's and pour yourself a drink in the parking lot and walk around and do your thing.
So would you make it, you know, establishments that are pouring drinks, or how would you change it?
I don't know if Greer's is, is governed by the ABC when it comes to serving alcohol. They're a seller, but they're not a server. What I'm looking at is just the plain language of this, and you go
He bought it in
Alcohol purchased in. And I'm looking, I'm thinking about my police officer going, okay, a guy's got a wagon with a load of vodka in it, and then another guy's got a wagon with a load of vodka.
Is he a cop, sir?
Where'd you purchase that? Well, I got it at Greer's. You're okay, you can go. I'm gonna arrest you for violating the city ordinance because you didn't buy it at Greer's. It's the same stuff. It's kind of
I think, I'm thinking of just what you, it's served during
You're thinking of everybody having it in a designated cup during these events. Is that how you delineate?
I'm not saying how you would do that. I think definitely plastic, whatever the establishment. But their, Greer's is not, they don't pour drinks for individual purposes. I don't know how you would, it seems like that would be an easy way to distinguish what establishment can serve.
They're not allowed to pour a beverage in Greer's to take out the door. Personally, it's not purchased there.
But I think you're conceding, Marcus, that people are gonna come into the CBD with it from outside. They're, they're absolutely gonna be doing that. I mean, it just
They're doing it now.
They're doing it now, and they're gonna continue to do it.
It's not gonna change.
And that's not gonna change.
See, to me, again, you're worried about this enforcement. The enforcement would be if you see an alcoholic beverage, arrest them. That's the easiest for them. It's clear it's plain and simple. You don't have it outside the premises. If you got outside the premises, you got a problem. Otherwise, we're gonna sit down rules on how you can take alcohol outside and get the police to understand how they can, who they can arrest and who they can't.
I think the problem now is that businesses are being affected because it's almost impossible to monitor during special events when people leave with a cup. Those are the businesses that are being penalized. That, that's the part we're trying to fix, too. It's not just
Well, it's unfortunate that they are, but I'm not for penalizing the entire town for some businesses. That's my problem. I understand that some businesses might have a problem during certain events, but I'm not for penalizing the whole town because, again, my statement on, you know, this human nature being the way it is, you're gonna feel, people are figuring out more ways to get around this than Adam's house cat. And this, to me, it's just gonna get bad, bad, bad for the City of Fairhope. I don't see a good thing about it, period.
Councilman Boone, I, I appreciate your position, and I know you're gonna vote no, no matter what is proposed, and that's fine. I mean, and that's your right. But I think I hear a majority of councilmen
That's right.
Are probably gonna get in favor. So I gotta get something to move along that, that, so we can move forward with it. That's what I'm trying to, trying to do. Your objections are noted, no doubt.
No problem.
Do we need to define what the special events would be?
Yes.
In advance?
And, yes, and, and, yes.
I'd say First Friday Art Walk, Mardi Gras parades, lighting the trees.
Christmas parade.
Christmas parade, arts and crafts.
Isn't Christmas parade supposed to be about kids?
Kind of family oriented.
Family oriented.
Everything in Fairhope is family friendly.
I don't think you're changing these events.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're already
We, we can discuss that. One of the things I wanted to ask, it come up, was about start time and stop time because I know, I, I bring New Orleans up a lot, but when they have football games at 12 o'clock, people start tailgating at 10, 8:00 or 9:00. When they have them at 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night, people are drunk when they get there. So we, we need to get a starting time for this and a cutoff time. We've been talking about the cutoff time, but if you can get a start time to, that would help.
Two hours before an event to two hours after an event?
Well, I'd say when it starts.
They gotta get there and get their chair.
They gotta get prepared.
An hour before
I'm, I'm thinking First Friday, I guess.
Five to 10, five to nine. I mean, that'd be during the, that'd encompass the beginning and end of the event.
Five to nine, 10.
Five to, yeah, five to nine or five to 10.
I'd say, yeah, you can go early, you're gonna, you're gonna have
Five, 10.
Arts and crafts starts at 10 a.m.
Yeah, what you gonna do at Arts and Crafts?
Mimosa.
Well, maybe they just don't get to drink during the day, I don't know.
Well, they can, any of closes.
Well, they don't get to wander around during the day with drinks, I don't know.
Yeah.
I always saw a picture of mimosa's in my corner.
We can pull Arts and Crafts out of the special events, I mean.
You're saying an hour before or after the closing of the event? But when is, when is First Friday?
I just think it's easier to set a, I think it's easier to just set a
Closing time.
Set parameters that don't change, that people can, I think five to, five to 10 to me would be reasonable.
That you're gonna do MMOR parade, they gonna allow that?
Ah.
No? People are all downtown, the streets are closed, but then you can't do it then?
I don't know. I mean, I guess you can, there's too many things I don't know. I mean, I guess you can, there's too many things that can be exceptions.
An hour before, an hour after, and then-
Well, you gotta look at the, the intent behind what you're doing. I mean, are we doing it because our businesses are being penalized because it's, by the ABC Board, because it's hard to police during a special event, people coming in and out? Or are you doing it to promote people having the ability to walk around with an alcoholic beverage in their hand? I mean, if you're doing it for the business side, then it makes sense to have it just a, just a, a deadline. It's five to nine only on special events. If you're doing it to promote people's ability to walk around with alcohol in their hand, then you make it specific to each event, an hour before to two hours after, you know?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I, I don't- I like the five to 10, you know, it just-
I think that's easier to, easier to follow, easier to enforce.
Five to 10.
Five to 10.
What other events?
That's always come to mind.
I don't know. I, I think you're almost watering it down to the point where it's pointless almost.
You can always vote my way. Enjoy the club, bro.
Spring Feuer Day.
Mr. Currie, I'm gonna let you speak. I know you wanna speak.
Who, me?
Yeah.
I need to stand up or just sit down?
Yeah, come stand up.
All right, check it out, guys.
You need your name and address, brother.
My whole address is Dragonfly Food Bars, I don't need to know.
I'm just messing with you.
All right, this specifically for us as business guys, and I'm speaking for everybody that owns bars and restaurants that hold liquor licenses, this whole entire thing happened with the ABC Board on the Christmas parade. They specifically said that they were targeting our businesses, okay? I work very hard for the money that I get to make with my business, that I get to pay taxes with and feed my child and my family with. It's not a brothel. It's nothing crazy that everybody thinks. Maybe you think this, I'm not sure. Simply enough, it's a very simple business. People come in, they buy a drink, they drink the drink, they go home, okay? Hopefully in a cab if they've had too many. Long short of it is, with Entertainment District, if my business continues to get hit over and over, which they say they're gonna continue to sting downtown Fairhope because they have a problem, I don't see that. I've been born and raised here, I've seen it happen, and it's plain and simple that if we can have a special event where my patrons can walk out in the street and the parade goes by, they see it go by, catch their candy, whatever it is, they finish their beverage, and at 10 o'clock they have to go home, that's fine. I'm fine with that, and I literally sell more alcohol and food than almost every single other restaurant in Fairhope does. And I'm standing here by myself, there's no other restaurant people here besides me, because I feel really passionately that this is gonna be something that's not gonna turn into Bourbon Street. Bourbon Street has been like that since day one. It was founded on alcohol, prostitution, and drug abuse, period. That's New Orleans, it's not Fairhope. This is only gonna keep us as business people having a peace of mind to know that we're not gonna have to turn around at 8 o'clock and ABC kick the door in and run off. I'll put the number out. We lost about 560 bucks in sales on the Christmas parade, not because people walked out, because they got terrified and ran out on their tabs. 560 bucks for me might not be a whole lot for everybody else, but that pays for the liquor that I have to purchase in order to put back on the bar to feed the people with alcohol when they come in the door. So if this continues to happen, Fairhope is not gonna have a first Friday atmosphere. There's not gonna be a parade atmosphere. It's basically just kinda withered away, and you may get your way, but the people like myself that survive off this business wanna fight for it to get it to, if we turn around, we don't have to be like, "Oh crap, here comes the ABC Board again. Everybody act right and stand like this." We do what we can, the best that we can to our ability. Like the mayor said about policing the door, if I'm to police my door during a special event, I have four exits. That means I have to have a $12 hour employee at each exit watching the alcohol leave that location. I can't do that. I mean, as a small business guy, you can't hand out 400 and something dollars every Friday night or every special event to a door guy. It just doesn't work that way. So for us, it's more beneficial not to get people drunk and loaded and tear Fairhope up or whatever it is. I love this town as much as everybody that's in this room. I was born and raised here, my name's on the sidewalk. But the long short is I wanna be able to turn around at the end of Friday night with my seven-year-old daughter in front of my establishment and my bartender not call me crying and say, "The ABC Board's here threatening us with this, 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 and this." It's a very simple procedure. People walk in the door, there's already people drinking on the sidewalk anyway. I ran them off of my courtyard during the parade because they had their alcohol on my property. I pay for that license and I have to fight to keep that license every single day, when the average citizen's gonna make up their mind on what they do regardless of whether or not I sell them alcohol or not. So, you know, there's that.
Thank you, Mr. Currie.
Well, actually, contrary to belief, I love an alcohol-fueled environment. However, I do not drink. Now, why that's-
Hey, you know what? I don't drink either.
I couldn't tell you, but I do like it. I just-
I'm one of the only owners that don't drink alcohol, so there's that.
What hour before, what hour after?
Yes.
I'm still five to 10, but-
Yeah, and I'm not, I, I, I don't know whether, I still don't know whether I like it or not, but if I do like it, it's, it's gotta have a designated time.
Well, the thing is, is what about the business owners that pour free alcohol? And they're there all day long in their establishment with alcohol already, that don't have a liquor license. Do you go in there and tell them they cannot pour their own alcohol until 5 o'clock? You see what I'm saying? So there has to be something that, you know, kind of includes everybody in this, because if the, the regular businesses and retos are allowed to give away a glass of wine, when do you tell them they can and cannot do it? They don't have a license in the first place to do so, so do you exclude them and they can't give away alcohol anymore? Is it just the bars? It's a big gray area in the middle of the store.
Well, what you're saying is that in that case, you would have to enforce the open container law at that point.
Correct.
Which puts a burden on police force, I, my, my personal opinion.
I mean, if you start it an hour before and end it an hour after, I mean, it's not like that one hour, somebody's gonna sit down and chug a bottle of keel and go kick somebody's window. It don't work that way.
I'd advocate for an hour before, hour after.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
All right. We got something we can introduce then?
I'll give y'all tacos. I don't care, I'm just saying, I just want this thing to move. Right now, I'll go get a whole pile of, bring a wheelbarrow full of tacos over here.
I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Take $24.99 worth. All right, uh, we've got a few minutes, uh, questions for the budget. Mayor, do you have some paper, some updated numbers to give us?
Yes, and this is, pass it. And Jill, if you can come up. This is, I think I did email, I, I'm definitely for making a decision on the Entertainment District, but I asked that that be put in January because we still haven't passed the budget. And, um, now we have 10 minutes to discuss it for the council meeting. And I just, personally, I feel like this budget is not being put as a priority. And extending it to January 18th, that'll be four months into the fiscal year, one-third of the year has gone by. I've already said that it's a little confusing when comparing year to year. Every time we wait further into the year, the numbers are skewed.
To, 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 to address that, and I know you want it passed, and I, and I, and I understand that.
Everybody wants it passed, not, not just me.
Well, and I know Robert and I spent a considerable number of hours on it this week, and we just, we, we tried to get it on air tonight, we just, we just couldn't, we couldn't get there. We're not there.
Neither one of y'all have called me.
We have, well, I don't have questions that I need explained to me. I understand what the requests are and why they've been requested. My, my questions have more to do with, okay, what, what can we do without? And so when you come back with it, I can give you a number and say, "No, you need to hit this number."
I think that tonight you're gonna see, because Xavier came in and really shed a big light on things, something that has been duplicated, and that is on the, um, transfer to capital projects, kind of in the middle of the page. Um, and the 2017 figures, you have 1,902,500, yeah, just about 1.9 million. And in the, um, budget, we duplicated that money, because that's the money that was already in for 2017, and it's already been transferred. So the reality is, that's a huge deduction for, um, the amount that's going from cash reserves. It reduced, the only amount that's now in capital projects is 173,000, and then when you come to the bottom under cash reserves, cash reserves are eliminated.
The other, the other thing that I was gonna say, Mayor, was that if we, uh, just like we did in the last meeting, uh, I believe it was for, um, the Gas Department, if there are items that are needed, we, we can also approve line items until we get there. So we're not completely stymied in the city if we haven't passed the entire budget. If there's something that you've gotta have between now and the next meeting, you can put it on the agenda. And we didn't deny any of those. They were all, they were all approved. Uh, we didn't deny them on the agenda, nor did, nor did we deny funding of any of them. So there is a process, because anything that's budgeted comes back to the council for final approval anyway. Um, so it's not that we can't move forward, but I, I think, council, feel free to chime in here.
I mean, but based on that information, do you understand how that changes everything?
It changes some things, yeah.
It changes everything. I mean, because we've made additional cuts, um, which are reflected in, in this, and now you can see, uh, the difference, uh, in the budget 2017 and, and this budget, and then, uh, there's no cash reserves. We, we have the amount of transfers required from utilities is substantially lower, because it's not paying operating anymore. That's on, kind of on the bottom, the city operating expenses. I mean, everything about this, and Xavier was, you know, kinda made it a lot easier to understand, that this, all this is, is a presentation, and it's a manual entry for a lot of this stuff.
Right.
But because a lot of these capital purchases and projects were, and improvements were already in the 2017 budget, we already showed in the actual that it was already spent when it wasn't. So you can either add it now or that way, but that can now be completely deducted. So really, that cha, that's a game changer.
It is a big change, without doubt. Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I had a question just on clarification, and I talked to the mayor about this earlier and, and, and I had brought it up to you, and I just wanna bring it up again for everyone's clarification. But, um, for the Fire Department, they were, there was in the budget for a quick attack truck and in the budget for, um, I guess redoing the chassis system on the, on the older truck. And you indicated that the quick attack truck-
It's already been ordered.
Has already been ordered.
It just hasn't been paid for.
And it just hadn't been paid for. That was something that was from last year.
Right.
We ordered it last year, because the budget was six months in. By the time we ordered it, it wasn't delivered prior to-
But the resolution to purchase that has already been passed, too, so effectively-
Right, but we're just showing actual, though.
Yeah, right, you're showing actuals.
That's what I'm saying. We're, we're just, we're giving y'all actual numbers, and-
And that's what I'm saying, is that's 170 that really, you could almost pull that out of this.
Right.
Because it's already been-
I gave you the presentation that showed everything from 2017.
She's just gonna show actual expenditures in fiscal year 2018.
You can either deduct it from 2018 or add it to 2017.
I thought it was 170, but I don't know.
But regardless, when you do that, the numbers end up being very equal. But we're actually accomplishing a lot more in 2018 than we accomplished in 2017. I just don't think, that's fine to approve, to extend it, but I think we could have a simple special meeting, go over all these details and get it done.
I would like, I would like to see us try to do that before the end of the year. I would just think that'd be a good way to wrap up.
Now you're talking Christmas week. I, I-
Well, that's true.
That's a lot to ask, but we, I'm not saying we can. I, I, we're just gonna keep hammering away at it. We're, we're hammering away at it. I'm, I'm, I think we're, we're, we're a big step towards it, but, I don't know, we might still be several hundred thousand dollar shot where I think we need to be.
You're looking at it as a cutting expense instead of what it's gonna produce or how we might have to pay for this somewhere else. Because again, this is just a sheet of paper. It's a tool. It's something that I think we should look at again in a couple months.
And, and, you know, as a living document, if revenues start exceeding projections, things can be added.
But we're already three months.
As opposed to, as opposed to banking on revenue and hoping for it, you know, we, we can always add things. Nothing would ever preclude us from adding things.
Well, the, but the fact that we have waited 90 days, and, and over 90 days, if we even do it at the end of this year, this year, we've already saved, I wouldn't say saved because we haven't moved forward, what you're just, what you're talking about, because we're already a quarter into the year. You see what I'm saying? I mean, this was proposed in September.
Assuming that everything was fulfilled that was in the budget.
Well, this is a, this is an annual-
Right.
From 12 months. So we're already gonna save way more than the amount that you're talking about, because the timeframe that we're approving it.
And that would be in regards to what, if every single capital expenditure was approved, we wouldn't ultimately save it. So you must be talking about labor.
It would be labor, and some of, some of these things, the larger equipment in here in Public Works, the, uh, garbage trucks are leases, three-year leases.
Yeah, and, all right, that's a question for you. I'd like to see a justification for some of those leases, because in, in some cases, uh, you know, the argument can be made, we'll get a new vehicle or new garbage truck or whatever every three years, but if you can get six or seven years out of a garbage truck and, and the purchase price of that's somewhere between three and four years of lease, you don't get the benefit of that two or three years not having a payment on it.
And that's what I'll, I'll have Richard Johnson talk to-
I'd like to see justifications.
Yeah, I mean, and those are things, like I said, we could have been talking about for three months. I don't know what your questions are, because you're not asking me. So I kinda have to forecast what your questions might be, present them again, and it's, it's been very time-consuming for us. And I don't think, based on this, and, and that, the new information that I'm giving